I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's March 5, 2020 meeting. We only have one action item on the agenda, and it does say consideration and vote to rescind the action taken at the February 3, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting to approve and enter into the proposal host community agreement with Heal Sturbridge, Inc. for retail adult-use marijuana establishment at 660 Main Street in town, and in conjunction therewith to approve and enter into the proposed amendment to the existing host agreement with Heal, Inc. for medical marijuana treatment center at the same location, and to approve and enter into a host agreement with Heal Sturbridge, Inc. in the form presented, as that form has been modified in accordance with the Board's prior vote for the operation of a retail adult-use marijuana establishment at 660 Main Street in Sturbridge. Jeff, would you like to translate that, please?
Yes, based upon the conversation the other evening, it was my understanding the Board at this point wished to separate the two agreements rather than amend the medical at this time to change the moratorium provision and to change the financial provision. You're just going to vote on the Heal Sturbridge, Inc. HCA that was negotiated, and the existing medical that was approved several years ago would remain in its current form with the five-year moratorium intact. That's my understanding.
Yes.
But I would like to make one comment on the motion. I'd like a semicolon after, and to approve and enter after or at the same location, semicolon, and to approve and enter into. That would make it two different things. But that is my understanding of the desires of the Board, and that is the motion that's before you this evening.
Okay.
Next morning.
Okay, any questions from the Board? Comments? Mike, would you hand up?
Oh, yeah, I was writing something down, but my question is, is the moratorium stays in place? And so what's the situation with conversion? They won't be able to convert at a later date?
They would.
They would be able to convert.
That's what the contract says.
Yeah. See, and, oh, no, go ahead.
Their existing contract says that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they still would, so they'd have, they could have two adult-use facilities?
Yes, and that's what I-
No, they would have one location.
One location, but they would have the medical with the ability to convert, okay? And then they would have this agreement for 1,600-square-foot one. So to me, that's two shots at the target, and I'm not going to go along with that. I would be amenable to probably lifting the moratorium earlier, say, the end of June, instead of waiting till 2021. But I'm not really going to vote for a motion where, in my mind's eye, it's giving two shots in the same place. It's just how I feel.
I agree. I would be in favor of lifting the moratorium this June, but I think two swings of the ax is a little much, but I am definitely for lifting the moratorium.
Oh, my goodness, Mary, confused now. Let me just say what my understanding is, and then tell me if I'm right or wrong, right? Heal Sturbridge can move forward to seek the special permit right now with what, that's what we negotiated with them.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, in the event they are unsuccessful, I don't, okay, that scenario, they still have a right to convert in a year under their existing host agreement?
Yes.
Okay, I-
That remains unamended.
Right, and so let me also say the flip side of the coin. In the event that they are successful, then does the language reflect that Heal, Inc. cannot move forward?
No, because you're separating the two agreements.
See, okay, I, but they, I thought the language was going to be in the host agreement with Heal, Inc., in that medical agreement. In the event that Heal Sturbridge is successful and they have their retail store, Heal, Inc. is not, even by their own, you know, assertions at meetings, they have no interest in having two.
Okay.
So I thought the host-
They would.
Correct, okay, but they don't, so I thought our host agreement and the medical was going to reflect that.
It does.
And say, so they can't have two, it's going to say, in the event Heal Sturbridge has an adult-use facility, then they are waiving their statutory right under Heal, Inc. That's my understanding of what the applicants were willing to do.
They were, but at your last meeting, wait a minute, let me finish.
Yeah.
The HCA amendment to Heal, Inc. said when they get an HCA for Heal Sturbridge, they waive their right to conversion, not if they get a special permit, if they waive, if they get an HCA for an adult use.
I get that.
But now, at your last meeting, because when you adopted this original motion, you had the two agreements linked, right, which would provide for Heal Sturbridge to get an HCA, and Heal, Inc. to agree not to convert, but now you're separating these two agreements, leaving the medical alone and only voting on the Heal Sturbridge agreement. So your prohibition against a future conversion, you're leaving by the wayside at this point.
Okay, and I apologize for this, but that was not my understanding of what was going to happen. I understood the applicant's concern that when they agreed to waive Heal, Inc.'s ability to convert, they did so with the understanding that we were only going to have two host agreements, because they waived that right in the event we signed a host agreement with Sturbridge. And they came back and said, well, that's no longer acceptable to us, because if we're not one of the ones that gets the special permit with Heal Sturbridge, we don't want to forever give up our right to convert under the statute, which to me is reasonable. They were giving that right up in the event that they were one of the signed host agreements when there were only two.
Oh, I understand.
But I also don't want to give them more than what they were asking for, which is what we're doing right now.
Your decision at the last meeting was to separate.
Separate, but necessary, but by separating Heal, by separating the two agreements, we still need, at least for my end, we still need the Heal medical facility to say, in the event Heal Sturbridge is granted a special permit, we do waive our right to ever convert.
Then let the original motion stand.
The original motion's not doing what they want it to do.
Well, you can't have both.
Yes, you can.
Catherine, excuse me.
I don't understand the mechanics of what you're asking for.
Well, in the Heal, okay, so in the Heal, what I'm asking is that we do what the applicants themselves were really willing to do. They stated on several occasions, right from the beginning, when we had concern that they would essentially end up with two licenses, one for Heal Sturbridge by special permit and one for Heal, Inc. in a year when their moratorium lifted by statutory right. And they had said on many occasions, we have no interest in having two facilities. So my understanding is Heal Sturbridge moves forward, and in the event they get a special permit, that's it for them. They've got their adult and medical use.
Mary, I understand, but that's not what you all decided to do at the last meeting.
Well, I'm sorry, that was my understanding.
But the host, wait, let me finish. The host agreement for the Heal, Inc. has the provisions you're looking for. It does, and they agreed to it, but at the last meeting, because they didn't want to give up a conversion capability, they asked for conversion now. And from that conversation, you decided to leave the Heal, Inc. alone, as it currently exists in form, and just approve the HCA for Heal Sturbridge to go forward to get a special permit, with the understanding that at some point, if this doesn't work out, come back to the Board and we'll consider it again. That's where you left this.
Priscilla?
I have a question. So supposing hypothetically, okay, that Heal Sturbridge doesn't get approved today, what's gonna, what's the next move? I'm just curious.
They have.
No, I want to know what this Board would do, like, because this Board was willing to, by majority, give three out. So I want to know if they don't give it to Heal Sturbridge, what will happen?
I'll give you my input.
I don't, you already have, well, hold on. If you refuse to pass this motion that's written today, the motion of February 3 is still in effect.
Okay.
They sign the two agreements if they wish and move forward to get their special permit. You still have a valid agreement on an HCA existing today on both.
Okay, so we have a valid agreement for, because we voted it in?
Yes.
Because this has gotten so confusing, it's out of control.
You have a valid, you have two, you have a valid motion on a Heal Sturbridge, Inc. HCA, and you have a valid motion on a Heal, Inc. amendment to their medical. At this point, though, the applicant wasn't willing to sign the medical because it prohibited conversion.
So can I, can I just ask?
Yeah.
So if, to me, to understand this, I'm going to maybe be repetitive, but I really need to understand this. So we have an agreement with Heal Sturbridge and HCA, and they can go forward.
You all agreed to one, they've not agreed to it yet. They've not accepted the agreement.
Now, does their medical, does the medical, the original one back to February 3, does it prohibit conversion? Or does it, it does?
It does.
So the one on February 3 prohibits conversion for Heal Medical, but allows Heal Sturbridge to proceed. Am I correct?
Yes, two separate agreements, and that's what they do.
Okay. I think, I think we need a point of clarification. In the Heal medical amendment, okay, what does it say? Does it say they're giving up conversion in the event a host agreement is signed? Or does it say they're giving up the right to conversion in the event that Heal Sturbridge gets a special permit?
If the host agreement is signed.
Okay, so that's, thank you. So that, that is their point here. It's very, very easy to do both. What Heal Medical's amendment should have been, which was what I thought it was going to read, is not they give up their right to conversion if a host agreement is signed, but they give up their right to conversion in the event they get a special permit. That was, that is very easily done. You said, I can't have my cake and eat it too. Yes, you can. The reason they agreed to the language in the medical agreement that said they're giving up their right to conversion in the event a host agreement is signed is because they felt like if they got to the signing of the host agreement, they can move forward for the special permit. They weren't competing with another entity, because we said we're only signing two host agreements. And that's why they agreed to that kind of language. What the language should read, now that we agreed to sign three host agreements, to put them in their same place and to put us in our same place, is the medical should read, they give up their right to conversion in the event Sturbridge, Heal Sturbridge gets a special permit, not in the event we sign a host agreement, but in the event they get the special permit.
That wasn't the language that was directed to staff. The language directed to staff was for the HCA, and that's what we put in the agreement. We'd be happy to amend it again, if that's the wishes of the Board, but the attorneys and the staff took the language that was approved by the Board of Selectmen and inserted it directly into these agreements.
Well, the language that, with all due respect, you know, maybe we weren't clear, but now, but now, what we in essence did is something neither the applicant nor any of us said, which is they have a right to two, and that's what we're now agreeing to. They can move forward with their special permit, they can get their special permit, and they can convert Heal, Inc. And that, with all due respect, was never, and I think that our attorney, maybe we didn't agree to the right language, but I think our attorney and staff should have known we were never intending to give them two permits, and they never wanted to.
I know.
You never wanted to, right?
But it is-
Well, we're not mind readers.
But it's not being mind readers, Jeff, it's documenting what the understanding-
Well, everything is-
It's also a lack of, you know, along the way.
You could have solved that by amending the medical language to say special permit, not HCA.
That's what we wanted to do. I don't think any of this has been clear, and it's not, and I, please excuse, it's not to you. I don't think any of this has been clear. I think this Board has walked the muddy waters for far too long and doesn't understand a lot of the stuff. I will say that for myself, I'm not going to speak for anybody else. This has been as muddy as can be. And you think, you think you're doing one thing, and it turns out you're doing something totally different. And I don't know where the fault lies, but I don't feel we got enough information or clearest information or concrete fact to go with this, with any of this, along this whole process. And it's very frustrating to sit here today, thinking that this should be a five-minute meeting, is what I expected, because I thought everything was clear, and then now the muddy water just got thicker. So if we approved Heal's, again, I'm going to go back to this, if we approved this today for Heal Sturbridge, Heal, Inc. does not convert, a Heal Medical does not convert.
No, they can't.
No, they can't.
Because you're not touching the medical.
If we don't touch this measure today, if we don't approve this, this item, does it stay with, Heal Sturbridge is approved, Heal Medical doesn't convert? Is that, is that right?
But to, to select Whitman Dowling's point, if you really want to accomplish what you're seeking, you need to change the proposed amendment to the medical to strike on the receipt of a host community agreement and insert on the receipt of a special permit for Sturbridge, Inc. That would change the outcome.
Can I, can I explain? We're on the same wavelength. Right now, we agreed to sign the host agreement, they're not on board with the Heal Sturbridge host agreement. So right now, if nothing gets signed and nothing happens, they just have their Heal Medical, not modified, because we haven't signed anything with them yet. They have their Heal Medical with a right to convert in June or July of 2021.
Okay.
That's a statutory right.
Right.
And the moratorium ends.
Ends, right.
If nothing is signed, that's what they have.
Okay.
Okay? We made the mistake, well, it wasn't really a mistake, I'll leave it with the fault of the Board on this. They agreed to a change in the medical host agreement to read that they are giving up their right to convert if Heal Sturbridge has a host, signed host agreement. Their attorney came back, and I think reasonably so, and said, that language was agreed to because we thought you were only agreeing to two host agreements.
Right.
Which was really what was supposed to happen. I know select people can change their minds, I get that, but that's the circumstances that they agreed to that kind of language. They said, they came back and said, that language is not okay anymore, because if three host agreements go forward, and we're not one of the ones that jumps the hoop quick enough, there's a problem. We gave up everything, we're not getting a special permit for Heal Sturbridge, and we gave up our statutory right to convert. Okay? So that was unreasonable. Now this is going too far the other way, because now it's saying Heal Sturbridge can move forward.
Heal Medical can move forward.
And Heal Medical, even if they're successful, not even two bites at the same apple, now it's saying, even if they're successful, Heal, Inc. can say, hey, you know what, we're making a lot, we're opening up one too. And that's nothing that they ever wanted. So the medical has to say upon-
As it was.
In the event, in the event a special permit's granted to Heal Sturbridge, we give up our right to convert.
Which is what I'm understanding from Jeff, was the original motion?
No, he, yeah, no, that was a-
The one for February 3?
The original said upon signing of a host agreement. That's what they wouldn't agree to.
Right.
You know? And so now, they're saying that we weren't clear, but essentially, this language is allowing them to. And I don't think we ever, you know, attended that. You know, I thought the host agreement, or at least council say, do you really want them to have two? That would have been a nice thing, because then it would, we would have caught it immediately.
I agree.
We would have caught it immediately.
That's what I'm saying, with no guidance.
Do you really want them, this language gives them two rights to two permits, one conversion to Healing and one Heal Sturbridge. And somebody could have said to us, is that really what the Board wants? Because all you had to do was listen to our conversation and know that's not what we wanted.
Right.
You know, so I-
But that's what it does.
And that's what it does, but-
That's why I said I won't vote for it.
Right, and I think, you know, Jeff may disagree, but I do think council, you know, could have helped, could have helped us with that, saying what you were agreeing to this way is not what you're all discussing.
This is my point when I said we received no guidance, totally, that's my point. Someone should have guided, someone, I don't care who it is, someone should have guided and said, listen, is this what you really want, because this is what you're saying?
This is the consequence.
Exactly, and I don't feel we got that.
Priscilla, though, I, you know, I don't want to argue, but we did get guidance.
Well, I'm sorry, but I don't feel guided.
And we kept changing our minds, we kept having different questions and everything, but we did get answers to the questions we asked.
We did get answers.
We got guidance from council, we got guidance from Jeff, Jean, and Sturbridge, Inc., well, Heal.
They answered our questions, but I don't, I feel like Mary, though, I think someone should have pointed to us and said, yes, they answered our questions, but somebody should have turned around and said, and I agree that it should have probably been the attorney, say, this is what you're saying, is this what you mean? To make it crystal clear.
This is what you said, this is what you should do.
Or, or, this is the consequence of what you're saying, is this what you really mean? And I don't feel anybody said that to us personally.
Chase?
I just have a question, and I'm talking out loud to my fellow members and to Jeff. What if we just lifted the moratorium this June and you didn't have to go forward with a special permit? Would you be happy with that, or?
They asked for last meeting.
What's, I'm sorry?
Did you ask for that the last meeting?
They asked for lifting the moratorium immediately, allowing conversion immediately, not in June, but that was basically the request at the last meeting.
Does that, what this all to that is, I guess, when I'm, because I'm in favor of lifting the moratorium.
Well, no, that's what I said at the beginning of the meeting, because this I'm not voting for, but I would be willing to amend the moratorium to this June, which is a whole year ahead of time.
Why can't we do it now?
Well, what I requested of our council in writing, because that question came up, and it was actually council for Heal that kind of correctly pointed us, pointed them in the right direction, because my question was, if we let Healing convert and they get the permit that way, does that satisfy the two? And he said yes, then there would only be one other that has a right to it. I was under the understanding that if they did it by conversion, that there would be two special permits, and I'm not in favor of three retail stores.
Right.
And I've said that from the beginning, I've been very consistent. And he said, it doesn't matter what order it comes in. The only way we'd end up with three is if organic and caregiver were the first two to get the special permit, then we couldn't prevent them, if they came last, with the conversion. But if they got to convert, they would get one of them, and we'd satisfy one of two, and then the other one would go to one of the other two. And I personally want that, because that's the first time I heard that, I want that in writing from our council, and I requested it at our last meeting.
You did?
Because that's, that would be the only way I would lift the moratorium right now and say, I would have lifted it six months ago had we, and we all were on that page, if I knew that they would have been one to get the permit by conversion. So I would like that in writing by our council, before I just have a blanket lift. Otherwise, I'm very on board to amend the host agreement for medical and say, in the event they get a special permit, rather than in the event a host agreement is signed. That gives them what they need for security.
Right, and it gives us that.
And it gives us assigned, what we should have done is asked to see the language in the medical, we should have asked to review it.
You had it.
Yeah, I know, Jeff, I understand, but with all due respect, I used to practice too, and, at a very, very good firm. And if I were sitting and listening to the conversation, what we thought we were doing was giving them the right to move forward, but not the right to move forward under Heal Sturbridge and Heal, Inc. Maybe that's what we said we agreed to, but what should have been pointed out is what Priscilla said. Look, do you understand that you are now giving Heal the right to two permits, one Heal Sturbridge and one Heal, Inc. by conversion, by agreeing to this? And I don't think that that point was shown to us. This could have been very easily taken care of by drafting the right amendment to the medical. It didn't need to be complicated. They were very straightforward. They said, the problem with the medical is we're agreeing to a signed host agreement, and now the Board did a flip, and they signed three, so we're not going to give up our right. But they, it sounds like they would be if you got the special permit for Heal Sturbridge, am I right?
Catherine?
Yeah, so I want to make one really important clarification here, which is the right to convert is site-specific. So in my opinion, it's somewhat of a red herring to worry about Heal, Inc. converting to an adult-use facility within a 1,600-square-foot facility where Heal Sturbridge, Inc. is already operating. So I'm not sure whether that point was ever made to the Board, but it's not as though Heal, Inc. could convert and go across town and have a second facility in town. So I just want to make sure.
No, that's, we understand that, it's all on that one site, that one building.
Is that by, is that by statute or in the host agreement?
Well, that's what the host agreement is for.
I know, I know.
The host agreement references the site.
But under the statutory language in the cannabis law?
Yeah.
And where it talks about the right to convert from, if you're an existing medical within a certain time, year, and I know you fell within that, you have an automatic right to convert, does it talk at all about at the existing facility?
It does not.
Okay.
It doesn't. I think that's where your bylaw and the language of the HCA, those are more specific. It's a one-liner in the statute. And another thing I, I don't think this is probably clear enough to fly, but we could always, if we wanted to proceed with the agreements that are in front of us today, perhaps, the issue of the medical amendment could be put on for a future date after the special permit. You know, we give the special permit long enough to percolate, August, say, you know, we keep that as an open matter.
It's up to the Board.
Yeah, I don't know the practicality of all that.
Can I ask, Priscilla? Okay, can you explain this as clear as you can? Because I don't want you to, I don't want to muddy any waters to you. So what you're saying, you tell me, please, again, so I can understand it correctly. You're asking for Heal Sturbridge to go forward and Heal Medical to stay as it is pending the outcome of the site permit?
Exactly.
Okay.
Correct. I'm trying, I'm trying to fit what we're looking for and what the Board's looking for into today's agenda.
So if it doesn't- For clarification, we- Jeff, when you say as is, are you talking about the existing Heal Medical HCA that was approved several years ago, or the existing amendment that was approved by the Board?
Several years ago. What gives us protection? What gives you protection?
Right.
Right.
I'm not sure that I care. So let me just confer with Ms. Phos for a moment.
Tap your, tap your button so the green light's off.
Oh, you have to hold it down.
Hold it, you have to hold it.
You can use an office if you want.
Yeah, you can.
Can we do that? Yeah.
It's easier than buttons.
Yeah, no.
Because they should have privacy.
Button, who's got the button?
Yeah, but I would like, because now a few days have gone by, so when it's fresh in everybody's mind, I do want our partner, our town council, KP, when he gave the opinion that a conversion now of Heal, Inc. would be one of the two special permits under our bylaw, I want that in writing from him, because it is sufficiently confusing, because if Heal, Inc. converts and they get one, he in essence was saying, under our bylaw, there's only one other special permit available. And I would like that to be in writing, if I could have that in writing.
Yeah, I was looking at the addresses of the facilities and so forth, and in the Heal Sturbridge host agreement, it has the town of Sturbridge principal address at 16 Broad Street in Sturbridge. I don't think that's right.
We don't even have a Broad Street.
I know.
Is that what you're looking at, Mike?
Still, Heal Sturbridge post agreement, in the first paragraph, where it says the corporate address of the town.
And the, and the Heal Sturbridge Community Benefit Agreement?
Which page?
That's the-
Yeah, page 18 on our packet. The very first paragraph. Yeah, page 18 on our packet. The very first paragraph near the end.
Okay, we'll change that in the signed copy.
I don't remember seeing that in the last iteration.
No.
So, uh-huh.
Traveling.
In the, in the Community Benefit Agreement with Heal, Inc. on page four, it has, it does have the correct address. But, you know, and all due respect, I, I do recall a conversation, and we were discussing trying to change the Community Benefit Agreement with Heal, Inc. to go from, from the, from the execution of the host agreement to the, to issuance of a special permit. And I remember, we wanted to make a motion, and council advised that it wasn't on the agenda.
So it couldn't be.
So we couldn't, so we couldn't, so we had to meet today to do that. That, that's
my recollection of-
No, you're correct.
The type of motion we wanted to make, and we couldn't do it.
Yeah, so we were pretty, we were also clear.
We wanted to do that, we were, we were open to doing that, that evening, and that was my recollection of, of what we wanted to do, is just simply change when the Community Benefit Agreement with Heal, Inc. would say that they would not convert. And that, that's what I thought we wanted to do Monday night, and that's what I thought we were going to do today.
Change the trigger.
Catherine? So, I just want to clarify what we're being asked. If what we're being asked is whether my, the proposal I just offered, which is to execute the revised medical HCA at some point in the future after we've received a special permit, that's completely fine with us. I mean, we, we don't have an opposition to that, to setting it forth that way, because as I've said before, and I'll say again, if Heal Sturbridge, Inc. receives a special permit, Heal, Inc. will not be converting. We're not going to run three operations out of one building. So that's perfectly fine.
The, the-
To, to move the, basically move the milepost on when that medical conversion right is forfeited by Heal to, to the receipt of a special permit.
Okay, so you're okay with the negotiated revised medical HCA with the language striking host agreement and inserting special permit?
The granting of the special-
I would say granting of the special permit and site plan approval. Ms. Bubon knows the-
Understood.
Yeah, but yes.
Those two items there, yeah.
Well, I don't think we're going to make any vote today, because we would like to get things in writing and everything. So we will have to bring it up at our next meeting. However-
Sixteenth?
I won't be here, so.
You're lucky.
We have spent the last 48 hours putting together a special permit application in reliance on receiving the signed agreement today, and I, I just want to point that out to the board, that we've basically done nothing but that since Monday night. So if there's any willingness on the board's part to sign it so that we may file the special permit application today, we would appreciate it.
Since we're here to vote, can we just change it right now? I mean, it's just a very, to the host-
I have no problem if the board wishes to do so.
I don't see any issue. And if, and if they don't come across on that, and if the lawyers are already saying they're going to do this, I don't see what the issue is. That's, I agree with Mike. This is what I thought we were here for, not another chat session.
I know, but I don't, I'm still- We're going to, we, well-
No, go ahead, Mary.
We're going to, I know where they're coming from. I feel very badly. I'm willing to come back in another two days. I don't have to wait till the 16th. But we're back to what our council said, in that we're amending something that wasn't, you know, this action item is different than what we would be doing, and that's the reason that Jonathan had a problem with the open meeting law. We wanted to do this at the last meeting.
I know.
We wanted to do exactly this, and he said, "No," and that's why we came back. So our board is faced with that same advice from our council, saying, "We can't do that because this, this is what the action item is." So I really do feel like, you know, I know some of us work full-time in camp, but I really do feel like we, we need to post again and this time know what we're signing. And I personally want to see-
In writing.
Yeah, want to see just the language of what that medical host agreement's going to say. Make sure they see the language. I don't want to see the entire packet. I just want to see that amendment and know that that's what we're all agreeing to. Because, you know, then it really should be two minutes.
So then, can I ask you a question?
Are you done, Mary?
I'm done.
Okay. Jean, can I, may I speak to-
Yes.
By way of you. Can they give you the packet they have pending the information coming Monday?
No.
No? Jean?
The zoning bylaw states that one of the submittal requirements is a signed HCA, so without that, I would be unable to accept it.
But now, the soonest they could come before planning would be next.
Monday.
When do you have meetings? Mondays?
No.
Wednesdays, I thought.
Tuesday.
Tuesdays.
Your Tuesday.
Their meeting, your meeting next Tuesday.
Oh, they're going to be on that meeting. It would have to be advertised and a butters notified. So we're looking at April at the earliest.
Okay, so even if, even if a few days transpires, not till the 16th, but even if a few days goes by till we sign it-
It's still able.
It's not going to change when they would be before the planning board. What I'm asking is, today is Thursday.
Right.
Right? Let's say we post and we have a meeting Monday and sign it. That's not going to have any significance in terms of how soon they get on an agenda. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm just asking.
That's a good question, actually.
You know, a signed host agreement today versus a, a signed host agreement on Monday, does it have any consequence at all for the applicants as far as getting on planning?
Yeah, excuse me. The advertisement has to go in the paper on March 26th, so we could still do that. I don't necessarily think it's a question of when they could get on. The peer review may not be done in time with, you know, depending on how long it takes for them to file, or if somebody else files before them. I think they're in the same position that, you know, everybody else has been.
So, a yet, so, a signed agreement today versus a signed agreement on Monday?
Same thing.
I could still get it in the paper.
Okay, that's the way.
And it still go in April? They would still go in early April?
They would start the process early.
Yeah, okay.
So today's not like this trigger date? You know, that's all, it's rhetorical. I don't expect any answer.
In other words, I guess, if we sign, if we did it today, or we do it Monday, it's not going to advance you anything. You're going to gain nothing. Even if you brought her the pa, from, from my understanding, and I'm, I'm asking this while you're here, because my understanding that you won't, it, it won't do you anything if you, if you handed it to her now, or if you hand it to her Monday, it's going to do you no difference. Am I right?
Unless someone else filed.
But it's not first come, first served anymore. It's one, it's one withdrawal.
It still is. Oh, I didn't know if that was official, or whether they're bound by that or anything.
He hasn't withdrawn. He has suspended his application.
Suspended his application. So what is that?
Has a signed host community agreement.
Right, but that suspension is, from what I saw, based on whether Heal got it or, or caregivers got it, and you're not going to know if you get it anyway till you go to planning. Am I, am I right?
I, I'm not privy to whatever that withdrawal-
Am I right?
Yes.
No, he said he was suspending his application process at this time to see how things played out.
Correct.
However, he has a signed host community agreement. I don't know whether, you know, the few days would give them enough time to get the missing documents that prevented them from filing, so I would hate to make any judgment on who-
Okay, so I have issues with that, too, because I raised some questions the other day, and I was told a whole different answer. So as far as I'm concerned, that's another issue.
What, what?
I asked why they-
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm not on the agenda.
My message to the board was he's suspended.
I understand that, but I, I'm not going to discuss that company. They're not on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, but-
I'm going to save it.
We could discuss, but we can't take action.
Well, I don't even know if we can discuss somebody else, because they're not on the agenda. That's what, I don't want anybody throwing it back in my face after.
Right. Let's just stick with what we have. So we, we do need a little bit more information in writing, and Mary, you would like meeting Monday?
I'm, I'm available Monday.
I'm off it.
Let's put it that way.
I'm off it. The sooner the better.
Before we pick a date, can I get a very clear understanding of what the board is asking to be prepared for whatever date we pick? My understanding is first, a revised amendment to the medical HCA that says, upon receipt of a special permit and site plan approval, you would forever go your conversion capability under the law, and then you would, and then the Sturbridge, the Heal Sturbridge HCA is fine.
That's right. It's very, it's kind of simple.
That's what I said.
Just need to, like-
Very simple when we talk about it.
Well, I understand, but there's a mechanics to this, because several votes have been taken, and I want to make sure that it's ironclad and bulletproof. So I don't know if you have to repeal anything, or you just accept revised language in the agreement. I'm going to have to ask council that. What would be the action of the board to take? I understand the language in the agreement, but what would be the action to take at the meeting?
Yep, you should ask. It, it's probably going to read exactly the way this does, except the difference is, this host agreement that they reference has language that's different than what we wanted. But this, this is the same, because we are, we're doing exactly that, except, and in conjunction therewith to approve and enter into the proposed amendment to the existing host agreement with Heal, the only difference is the language of that proposed amendment. I mean, get it from council, but that, that's the essence of it. That's what we're, that's what we're disagreeing on, the proposed amendment.
Well-
Because the proposed amendment that this is referring to, language says, "You're giving it up when the host agreement is signed." The proposed amendment that we want is that they're giving up their right to convert when they have a special permit at site plan approval. Really, I, I think.
I, I think they did change paragraph, number four on page five of the Heal, Inc. agreement, and I, I just read through that twice, and I don't really have an objection to the way it's worded, right here on-
Which one are you reading?
In the Heal, Inc., not Heal Sturbridge, Heal, Inc. agreement, section four.
Oh, section.
Well, it's, it's on page five of the agreement or page eight of our packet.
Yeah, this is, says, "Execute a host community agreement."
That's what they don't want. Yeah. They want, they don't want-
What is it?
They want a special- It's what you said before.
It says con-
They shall never seek to convert.
Site plan. See, see, Mike?
Yeah, town of Sturbridge.
If Sturbridge, Inc. executes a host agreement.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, it's what you said before. That's the language that's wrong. It's not executes a host agreement. It obtains a special permit and site plan review.
So why can't we just vote to change that wording right now? And I, I mean, it's, it does say in the form-
It shall never seek to convert.
But that's, that's not what we had discussed Monday night. We said we wanted that, that language changed.
But the proposed amendment that they're referring to is what was attached.
But they can't sign this anyhow at this time, the way it's worded.
Right, yes, well, so the best thing is to-
Or the change, the change that would allow them to, just tell me there's a meeting at 11:00 AM.
You missed it.
You're already here. The best thing to do is then-
This is, you know-
Chase, are you available Monday?
I can be available Monday.
Priscilla?
Yeah, I may get available.
Mike?
What, six, 6:30, something like that?
I don't know. I'm going to be on the beach. I prefer daytime if we can.
I'd rather be on the beach, but I'm not going to be.
No.
I can be here.
We do morning?
Can I be on the beach?
Can we do morning? I would prefer morning. Me, too.
Can, I, I just got to check and make sure mornings are okay for me, that's all. If I could shoot an email out right after this meeting, once I get out of here.
Yeah, but that's not enough time to post it.
Yeah.
It won't be morning, because right now, the earliest you can do is quarter of 12.
And that's if you post to the second.
And that's not, 12 o'clock.
So morning's out.
So Monday morning.
Monday morning is out.
Huh?
Tuesday morning.
I can't, well, it'd have to be 9:30 again.
It's whatever.
But that delays it one more day. I'd rather get it done as su, I'd, too bad today's not Wednesday.
Yeah.
Really.
Turn the clock back.
Yeah.
Well, what's matter with 1:00?
Well, it has to be. I mean, but that's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't know if I'm going to have the motion by 1:00. You wanted me to check with council?
We should, but I mean, that's a very, if we can't have the motion by 1:00, that's-
That's pathetic.
Well, it depends on if council's available.
Well, there's more than one. We've had more than one come in for this whole thing.
It's the same thing, except the proposed amendment language is different. I, I have a, because Mary's not going to be here, so I want Mary, our chair, to like be on board as to what we're going to agree to, so you can give your opinion. I know you can't be here. But, and I want to put you on the spot, but why don't you suggest to us, and then you can get our feedback, so this isn't a totally futile meeting, how you would change the language under the conversion prohib, prohibition in Heal, Inc. to make that amenable to you? How would you change the language? And then you can get our feedback, and we can see if that's okay. And then, only three of us really need to be here-
That's right.
If we know.
Yeah.
You know, you know, then, if we agree to that, because I'm going to end up being the one that chairs it.
Yeah.
I won't allow any other changes if people aren't here. But if, if it's exactly that, we only need three people here.
That's right.
And if you're working and can't come, you, you can know what we're signing.
Right.
I don't know if that works, whether you are not.
But I would think that we could do a 1:00. Can we post a 1:00 with a, with a worded some such that, without the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there's no reason we can't be posted for 1:00 Monday.
For Monday? No.
Posted.
Because you-
Yeah. If they put it out, one, if they put, post it by 1:00 today, that gives us all day tomorrow and all day, and then Monday, it gives us $48. It'll be a nice day, be working outside.
You can just put continuation of-
We'll figure it out.
Discussion and possible vote.
Yeah, because we've never had to have the exact motion.
We never put the motion out.
And it's useful to us to be able to read it, but, but as an agenda item, we don't need the exact motion.
It could be emailed to us.
Right.
Or to you, at least.
I don't know why we couldn't have deliberated it, changed it and-
For the same reason Jonathan told us the other night we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mary, you were explaining?
Well, I, I asked council to, to alter the conversion prohibition in language that would be acceptable to them, so we can know where they're coming from. So why don't you-
So the language that I would propose is as follows, and I'm going to read, I'm going to read through the town of Sturbridge, if that's okay, which is the fourth line, so that I'm not reading the entire paragraph, because we don't, we don't change anything after, after that phrase.
I got you.
"If Heal Sturbridge, Inc., a related entity under the same management and control as the company, receives a special permit, site plan review, and all other necessary local and state permits for the operation of retail marijuana, of a retail marijuana establishment engaged in the sales of adult use, i.e. recreational marijuana and marijuana products, in the town of Sturbridge." Dot, dot, dot.
Okay, um, do you mean site plan approval?
I do. Thank you.
Can you read it one more time for us?
Absolutely. I'm going to go forward this time.
And where, where is it appear?
I'm not copying. I'm going to rely on-
All right, so if we start at the top of page five, under section four, conversion prohibition.
It's actually page eight, I think, on our packet.
Yeah, well, it's five and eight. It's got rules.
Yeah, go ahead. "If Heal Sturbridge, Inc., a related entity under the same management and, and control as the company, receives a special permit and site plan approval, along with all other necessary local and state permits for the operation of a retail marijuana establishment." That's really as far as I need to go.
All necessary- All necessary what?
Local and state permits.
State permits, okay. All right.
So, Mary, I noticed that you didn't want to give them like two bites of the apple.
Right.
This, this...
Wouldn't give them two bites.
No, I know, I, well...
No, but the way it was written, it was definite.
It was two, it was actually two. This one, if they don't get it, they still have that second opportunity next summer to try again, so everybody knows that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, under Heal Inc.
Right.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not trying, I'm just...
Yeah.
Because they're only giving it up if Heal Sturbridge gets it. Otherwise, in, when that moratorium lifts, Heal Inc. can try to, you know, whatever, satisfy any of its shortcomings from the year before and, and go after the conversion. I'm telling you. It's my understanding, anyway, of what they're giving up.
Giving up a bite at the apple.
So, 1:00 Monday? Is that what you're setting?
Yes.
Are we in a position to say what we feel about this language, or are we waiting for, well, I guess that's...
I would wait.
Or are we waiting to...
I would wait.
To find out if council thinks that's good language protecting the town? You want to, okay, so...
I think it's wise to wait.
Well, if we're going to wait for council, then I want him here. I'm not wasting any more time. I, if, if he's going to word it different than this, then I personally want someone, otherwise, we're going to be back here again, and again, and again.
Well, if he words it different, I understand. If he words it differently, then they have to already have agreed to the different wording when they come back.
But they're going to need to know. And if, and if they don't agree, for whatever reason, and the lawyer, our lawyer doesn't agree, then, then he need, that lawyer, some lawyer from KP needs to be here and guide it that day, instead of hanging in the air again for everybody, for us and for the proponent. It's not fair.
I agree.
If, if it's exactly the wording that we just...
Heard.
...deliberated, then I don't think we need counsel.
I agree.
If it changes, then we need counsel, that's all.
That's how I feel, too.
So, he's going to run it by council. If council changes it a little bit, and they're okay with it, that's great.
As long, right, I agree. As long as they're okay with it, and so that we don't come in here on Monday and sit here again, and, oh, well, now we need the attorney again. That's a waste of time for everybody.
Well, it's not only time, it's money, every time we have the attorney.
I know it's money, but our time, my time's money, too.
I don't believe that he's going to have a problem with this language, because the conditions you've put on these agreements are your conditions.
Right.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes. You made that, Michael. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks for providing. It's still not over.
This is why we get...